All right. We'll call the meeting to order if the clerk will call the roll.
Cindy.
Here.
Nancy.
Yes.
Bob.
Here.
Kurt.
Yes.
Jay.
Excused.
And Eric.
Excused.
Thank you.
We are here today. The next item on the agenda, the only item on the agenda, is the public hearing seventeen dash one sixty-eight, public hearing for the proposed creation of local improvement districts for the purpose of street paving on Unimac, Vesta, and Pearl F Streets in the Severson subdivision. And I will read part of ordinance twenty seventeen oh one, section four point one two oh four oh. And it says, "A public hearing before the Assembly shall be scheduled within sixty days of validation of signatures on the petition and completion by borough staff of a conformed capital improvement plan and initial assessment rule. Such a hearing is to be held for the purposes of fully explaining to the property owners the extent of the proposed project, including layout, time schedule, estimated total cost, rate or percentage of the total cost to be assessed against each property, the estimated assessment amount for each property, and the assessment payment schedule, and to provide the property owners the opportunity to comment to the Assembly. The hearing shall be a duly-advised public hearing open to the general public but shall be primarily for the benefit of affected property owners. The borough will send notice of time, date, location of hearing, not less than thirty calendar days, to each owner of property located within the proposed LID by regular mail to the owner's last known address as it appears on the municipal real property tax rule. The notice shall include a copy of the initial assessment rule, a copy of the conformed capital improvement plan, or summary of the plan containing sufficient information developed by staff concerning the proposed project in order that each owner may fully understand the project and be aware of their specific obligations as a result of it, and shall generally inform the property owner of the manner of protesting or objecting to the creation of the proposed LID. Proof of mailing of the notice shall be made by the clerk's filing and affidavit with the Assembly setting forth the mailing. Affidavit is conclusive as to the facts stated in it at the hearing. Staff will explain the proposed project and public comment will be taken." There are thresholds for the number of written protests for an LID process to stop. We do not have sufficient protests for any one of those streets, however, the Assembly doesn't have to choose to move forward in any of the LID creations. If approved, we're going to make a decision at a future meeting, so we're just doing the hearing at this meeting. We'll generally give folks about five minutes to have their say, and we will do a Q and A. If you have questions, feel free to ask us or ask Chris questions that you have about the process, and we'll do our best to answer those questions at this time. And then my understanding is the Assembly can make modifications to the LIDs if we feel that that's appropriate. So, having said all that, I'm going to let Chris do an overview of what is being proposed.
So, we're here tonight basically because, the bottom line is because we've still got a paving plant in town, Secan's paving plant from last year's project is still here, and it costs a lot to bring that plant to town, and, you know, the borough would like to find ways to utilize that plant while it's here, you know, to the best of our abilities. Unfortunately, we have exhausted all of our paving funds, in-house paving funds, and so we wanted to offer up the LID process as a way to possibly get some more streets paved. And, you know, so we, the LID process is usually initiated by property owners. In this case, we weren't sure that everybody was aware that there was a paving plant here that would remain here for at least the time being, and so we decided to initiate the process. We offered up a list of streets that could be paved via the LID process. Right off the bat, we had some pushback from a couple of the streets, so we didn't, it was enough that we just dropped them off the list. There ended up being about seven streets that we sent out petition paperwork to, to give them an opportunity. And, and so we didn't, you know, we didn't get very much interest except on two streets, and that was Unimac and Vesta. And we got enough, we got enough interest on those streets, enough petition signatures that we're here tonight to talk about possibly taking the process a little bit further along. And, and for those of you that don't really understand what the LID process is, it's, as Cindy said, it stands for Local Improvement District. What it is essentially is a borough ordinance that allows residents to participate in the cost of street and/or utility improvements. And, you know, it's based on a multi-step public process, and what it does is allows, it allows improvements, you know, the property owners are able to get these improvements done using, you know, the borough as, essentially, the borough bank rules the project, and then property owners pay them back with interest. So, it's really just a mechanism to encourage improvements on, you know, development and improvements in different neighborhoods. It has three major steps. You know, one, first step is petition, which there's a, as Cindy stated, there's a fifty percent threshold for, you know, if fifty percent of the properties on a, on a given street decide that they want to move forward, then, you know, then it can go to the next step in the process. That petition stage includes a capital improvement plan and a preliminary estimate, which everybody got along with the petition packet that we sent out. The next step is public hearing, and that's where we are now, where we, you know, go into it a little bit more in-depth. A public hearing, you know, has to be held within sixty days of petition signature validation, which today is, is day sixty since we had the validation of petition signatures for Cindy already covered the protest process, and we don't, you know, we don't have anywhere near the number of signatures now to, at this time, to, you know, to stop the process on that basis. We would have to have fifty, fifty percent or more written, you know, protests in writing. So, you know, it's important to know that if you're here tonight and you want to officially protest this process, we encourage you, you've got pen and paper. You know, if you haven't already submitted a written protest, you can, you can write one up and submit it tonight, and it will count, you know, in the official record. According to the way the LID process is written, you know, it has to be a written protest, and after the hearing, no protest will be accepted. So, you know, I'm sure the Assembly will take whatever, you know, testimony they get into account, but if we're going to discontinue the LID process solely on the basis of the number of protests, if we haven't reached fifty percent by the end of this hearing tonight, then, you know, the process can't be stopped on that basis alone. Is that clear to everybody? Hopefully, I didn't turn too many gyrations there. So, following the closure of this public hearing, the Assembly may make amendments to the proposed LID boundaries, and they will decide whether or not balloting will take place. If there is no ballot process initiated, then the LID process will stop. So, there's a lot of ways this, you know, LID process can be discontinued. You know, it can be, you know, via protest, or the Assembly could decide nearly at any step along the way to not go forward. And so it's, it's really, and that's, you know, the process is designed that way, so, you know, if the property owners really want something to happen, they have to, you know, go through quite a few steps to make it happen. It's not, it's not easy to just, you know, implement improvements and, you know, if some of your neighbors are against it, it gives everybody a chance to, you know, participate in the process and have their say. So, if we end up doing going to balloting, which is voting, essentially voting to move forward with the paving or not, we would need greater than or equal to sixty-six percent of the lots represented by the LID area in order to proceed with paving. So, so I passed out a little cheat sheet that wasn't in the packet, but I kind of put together, you know, a quick and dirty summary of a lot of the different numbers that I thought might be of interest to the property owners in the Assembly. And, so in there, you can, on the first section there where I've got the total, I've broken it down, the total number of lots on each street, the fifty percent petition threshold, the number of lots on each petition that we received in favor, and then the ballot threshold to move ahead with paving. So, you can see there on each street, there's only a one lot difference in the number of lots on Unimac and Vesta. So, for each street, we would need sixteen lots to be represented by a positive vote to move ahead. And, so if we do move forward to the next step of the process, to balloting, then that's, that's the number we would have to have to, to turn that over to the Assembly and, you know, let the Assembly decide if they want to move ahead. If we get less than sixteen, then the process terminates, and we, you know, it's, it's, I believe the language in the code says without prejudice, so there's nothing to, there's nothing to prevent somebody from going back and starting a new LID process again. But, but the one that's currently underway will cease if less than sixteen votes are received during the ballot process. If the ballot process is successful, then the Borough Assembly again gets an opportunity to decide if we're going to move ahead with this or not. So, so it's, you know, paving is contingent not just on the number of votes, but also on approval by the Borough Assembly to proceed. So, does anybody have any questions about any of that that I just went over?
The ballot process, is that by mail, or how is that handled? What's the proper English?
It'll be by mail.
Okay, so it's, you have to return this ballot by a certain timeframe in order to be counted?
Yes, and I'm glad you asked that question, because if you, if you elect not to return your ballot, then it'll be counted as a vote in the negative. So, you must return the ballot for it to be, you know, for your vote to be counted towards proceeding. Anyone else?
I've got a couple of other questions, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure who didn't ask.
Oh.
How do you, with, like, property taxes? So, would that be the borough?
Are they, is the question applicable to you or to everyone in general?
I think it would be everyone in general.
Okay, go ahead and ask the question.
So, if the property owners elected to go through with this and to pay for these improvements and repay the borough over a ten-year period, do they have any kind of assurance that the city assessor would not count those improvements and basically have the borough double-dipping us for interest on money that, that we're making our own improvements with, plus then assessing us as a higher valuation and giving more property tax assessment from us?
I can speak to that.
Okay, I was going to say.
So, so, again, I'm very glad you asked that question, because that's something I was planning to go over later on, anyway. We have made assurances early in the process, and I don't remember if we put it in writing or not, but our intention, the borough's intention was not to use this as a tool to increase property values for the purpose of, you know, getting more tax revenue. And that was not, that was not supposed to happen, and I know we made assurances to that effect. I don't know if we put it in writing, but that is the intent, that we're not, you know, assessments will not go up as a result of any paving that might happen through this LID process.
It's a possibility, and nothing personal, but is there a possibility of that ever being in writing?
It may already be. I just, I can't remember. We've sent out enough paperwork, I can't remember that. Maybe that, that might be something for Steve to answer.
Can we, can we have folks go up to the podium to speak, this is being broadcast while recorded?
Sure.
So, I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry. Your question.
Well, I believe, or I think that some of the press materials that came out, that it said that our home values, the possibility of our home values rising was there. So, if that happens, then that kind of goes hand in hand with.
So, the question that was asked was whether or not the homes in the areas of the LID creation could have their assessments go up as a result of this. And under section four point one two point one hundred of ordinance twenty seventeen dash one, the section is all real property liable for special assessments, and it says, "All real property, including that which is exempt from taxation in accordance with the law, is liable for the cost of local improvements assessed in accordance with this article unless specifically exempted from special assessments by law. If borough property is benefited by the local improvement, the Assembly may wish to participate in the cost for improvement by making payments in lieu of the amount which would otherwise be assessed against the property." And if a government unit benefited by an improvement, well, if a governmental unit benefited by an improvement refuses to pay, it may be denied the benefit of the improvement. That isn't the case at this point. So, it sounds like we would have to specifically, in ordinance, exempt those properties.
If I may, I think this is going through the mics. I can't answer a question, because the assessor's not here. I don't, we just went through the Board of Equalization process, where I don't remember a single property where the condition of the street was part of the individual homes assessment. But we'd have to ask Mike Renfro, the assessor, for sure, to verify that. Meaning, you know, okay, Mike, when you assess Unimac Street, did you take into account the street, or is it just the lot and the property sitting on the lot? And I don't have an answer to that.
And that was part of the reason we didn't want to make a decision this evening. We anticipated that there would be some questions that we would have to flesh out before we decided how we were going to proceed.
But that's an easy, we can ask them directly and say, does the condition of the street have an impact on the value of the property or not?
So, one of the requirements of this hearing is that we read the objection letters. Did you want to do that, Mindy, or you want me to?
It's up to you.
I'm going to let you talk for a minute.
The first letter is from Kurt and Donna Marsh, and they are on Vesta Street. Dear Assembly, after going door to door and soliciting signatures for the formation of an LID and having many discussions, we are writing to oppose the paving of Vesta Street and laying the burden on the property owners who live on that street. Initial cost estimates provided by the borough seemed almost reasonable, but these more concrete numbers, pardon the pun, provided in the letter dated five twelve two thousand seventeen are substantially higher and would place a great, much greater burden on our family and others on our road, especially those who own two parcels. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the possibilities here regarding this. We'll continue to live happily in our great neighborhood and continue to dust regularly in our homes. Sincerely, Kurt and Donna Marsh." The next one is from Sharon and Brad Hunter. Thank you for the opportunity to explain our opinion regarding the creation of an LID for street paving of Vesta Street. The advantage of paving the street to reduce the dust generated in our area is obvious, and we understand the attraction of that, but we do not support the LID for two main reasons. The first is particular to our situation, where we are required to pay the full cost of assessing water and sewer for our second lot that has been in existence for twenty years or more. We do not wish to again be required to pay for services provided to other residents for free, nor do we have the ready finances to do so. The second concern regards the neighborhood in general, as we have many preschool and elementary school-aged children who play outdoors in and around the street. Our subdivision has no playground space provided, and so this is the place the children have. When streets are paved, people drive faster, and there is very real element of risk of accidents involving children. Respectfully submitted, Sharon and Brad Hunter." And the last one that I have is from Eric and Anna Larson. This is to make our objections known of use of an LID to pay for street paving. The borough is making it increasingly difficult to remain here in retirement, and that is for Vesta Street.
All right. And we received one other letter, and it was actually in favor of LID formation. So, moving on, is there anyone who would like to speak publicly for or against LID
I'm Darlene Whitthorne, I live on Unimac Street, and I am in favor of paving. I did listen to the comments made by the people that opposed it, and the dust thing actually is one of the main things for me, because I have asthma, and I, there's a lot of dust when it gets, stops raining for like a half a day, and it's difficult for people with respiratory issues. And then I also listened to the Hunters, their concern about our children, which is also a current concern for me. We do have some, a lot of children on our street, but they're also breathing that dust constantly, and they play outside a lot. I was noticing on our street, we have several kids that play basketball on, on the street, and they're, those kids are older kids, and they're very observant. When they see a car coming, they disperse immediately and wait till you go by. So, not all kids are going to do that, I know, and especially our younger ones won't know to do that, I suppose. But I, I just think it's safe, it's healthier to have a paved street. I didn't think about the fact that our property would be valued higher. For me personally, that would not bother me to have my property valued higher. If that doesn't happen, it's not going to make a difference one way or another to me. And I had one other point that I wanted to make. Oh, and I, I didn't know that there was sewer and water that would have to be put in there. I thought that was all taken care of. Am I incorrect about that?
No.
Is that what the Hunters said? Sewer and water.
I wasn't aware of any sewer and water improvements that were needed on those streets.
That was a gager.
That was one of the things, actually, that made those streets a good candidate for this LID process, is that there wasn't a whole lot of subsurface work that was needed. In fact, very little, really nothing more than some grading and filling potholes and tamping everything down real solid. But the sewer and water underneath both streets, as far as we know, is in real good shape.
And to clarify, their letter said that that was particular to their situation, that they were required to do that apparently when they purchased their second lot.
Oh, I see. Okay, actually, I have two more points. Another point was that I had a gentleman tell me on Unimac that he was not going to vote for it until the road was built up, because it wouldn't hold up, the pavement would not hold up. And I do recall that on Rambler Street several years ago, they put pavement, or whatever that is, they put on it a sealant of some sort. And that road is still in really good condition. Yeah, it's not perfect, but it, it has held up pretty darn well. So, I don't think that's a good argument. And this other point, I've got to make it, and it keeps escaping me. Just give me a minute. Oh, as far as our property taxes or the amount that's going to be assessed to our property tax, it's over a ten-year period, and that seems to me, for most people, pretty doable. If we had to pay it upfront, that would not be doable, and I can definitely would not have signed the petition. And there are people on our street that I know can't afford to, to have their street paved, and that, that is really my only concern. And it's my understanding that if, if we meet the threshold and it goes forward, those people will have to pay. Am I correct? My comments.
Okay.
Joyce Cummings, and I'm on Vesta. And I don't really have any comments in support, or, again, I have more questions. One of them was brought up by one of my neighbors, and they were talking about if the city goes through and, and this is voted for and passes, does the city put an actual lien against the individual properties, or is it just an additional assessment at tax time at the end of the year? Is somebody possibly selling their house? You know, if there was a lien against your house, then you would have to pay off that lien before you could sell it. So, that would be a consideration or a con. Does anybody know?
Do you know, Steve?
Do you know, Chris? I mean, I think I know the answer.
Yeah, well, I'll let you.
Okay. The, just the, the improvement, in other words, the fee, stick goes with the property, not the person. So, you are correct, it becomes a lien on the property if it's unpaid.
Okay, but it is actually a filing that the borough does against the property.
We weren't planning on doing that at this point. I suppose we probably could. At this point, it was going to be one of those, here's a list of people, and we're not even sure our property tax system can handle adding it directly to your property tax, that we won't have to send out what we call a supplemental tax bill that to each of the, you know, totally separate, still, you know, still deductible as a, as a property tax payment, but absolutely outside of the regular tax bill you get. We're not sure our system can actually handle it. So, we, at this point, had not intended on filing liens, although I believe the ordinance allows us to do that if we need to.
One last question. If somebody happened to have a landfill, and they came into three thousand some bucks and wanted to pay this off, is there any penalty or early payment issue with them doing so?
No penalty for prepay or paying upfront or paying halfway through and paying it all off whatsoever.
Is the interest deductible?
I don't know. That's a good question. I, no, I get it. That's why it's nice to have a maker in the room. I don't know.
I'm trying to write questions, make sure we follow up on some of these. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak in favor or in opposition to LID formation?
Anna Larson, twenty-five-year resident of Vesta Street. And at this time, when all we're hearing is tightening the budget and tightening our belts, we plan, where Eric and I are recently retired, and we plan belts, we plan, where Eric and I are recently retired, and we plan many, many years for this. And now this is thrown at us. It wasn't planned for. I think it's unfair. And like Donna, I'll just continue to dust more. It's, yeah, I grumble about the dust a lot, but at this time, when everything is so hard right now, and more being asked, take more out of our pocketbook.
I'm Joe Bertignoli. I live on Vesta Street. And trust me, when this first came out, I was dead set against it. In fact, I dragged my heels until the end to sign that petition to get it to move this far, until what I found out, the true, or not the, the projected costs were, and, and such. And I've, I've lived on that street a few years, and it's been improved a lot. There used to be some serious mud holes at both Unimac and Vesta, right at the beginning there in front of the Larson's house, and Donna, and Unimac down in front of first couple of lots. But the city, over the course of years, have, has dug out some of those sinkholes, filled them up, and that road has been, really stayed in good shape for, it was far less grading. It hadn't graded a lot, and in the springtime, bah, you'd lose a car in those bucks. But when I found out the, the true cost of this, or what the costs are projected now, and the fact that it would be financed by the city at a, at a reasonable rate, I, I wanted to jump on board, because I am sick and tired of the dust, and I'm sick and tired of the mud and the dirt. And every time you walk in the street, you track all that in, you track the mud in, and like I said, a half a day, and then all of a sudden it's dusty. And looking at what the cost I see on the piece of paper, $3,800, well, another reason I'm really against it is because I look at all the people that got it for free, and of course, everybody wants something for free, you know? Clankit High, because we didn't pay for that, Rangel Avenue State paid for that, but there's other streets around the school and Third Street, and all that, that all the people there got it for free. So I wanted it for free too, but nothing's free. And, and if you project the costs over it, it is, it is money's lost, but when you think of, I'm looking at 3,855 is what the figure I see on the piece of paper right now, and you, you drop that over 12 months, it's what, $35 a month? My math pretty good? Close enough?
Close.
So it's $35 a month, and it's like, you know, you look at it like pledging a dollar a day for your street, and, and I don't, I think it's a small price to pay to have that improvement, which would make that street, or both streets, so much more decent to live in. Comfortable, yeah, you know, whatever. But that's why I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it now, A, because as long as it proceeds on this route with the financing available for 10 years, and I, who knows if anybody else could be on this houses for 10 years and be unknown about what happens if you do sell the house or whatever. You know, it could go part of, it's part of the sale price or whatever like that. Say here, you got this debt, this is going to be added on, or whatever. I don't know how you'd do it, never sold the house. But, yeah, I just, I'm definitely in favor of the proposal. I'd like to see it proceed. I don't know whether with, I hear the opposition, that we only had a dozen on the street, whether we'd get the other four that just kind of didn't, either didn't pay attention or just didn't bother to return the petition, but I lobby for it, and, yeah, I'd, I'd just like to see it proceed for the comfort. Thanks.
Sorry, I have one more question. Joyce Cummings, on Vesta. If the longevity on the, on the more expensive option was slated around 15 to 20 years, I haven't really seen any of our pavement lasting that long, maybe I'm wrong. Is there any plan for what would happen if we get a pothole here or there on one of those streets, of who would be responsible for repairing it, or, or is that again on the property owners to front the bill for any kind of upgrade to the street?
Maintaining the street after the improvements will be the borough's responsibility. I don't know if that includes repaving, you know, in the event that the whole pavement fails. That would be a long ways down the road anyway before you get that kind of a problem. But as far as routine maintenance, that would be the borough's responsibility. It would not be a cost to the property owners on the street. And I guess I would just mention, as part of this hearing, I was going to go over the construction plan with the different options that are available, and so whenever the Assembly wishes, I can, I can do that, and, you know.
Because we started with stating objections, if there's anybody else that has an objection that wants to speak, why don't we finish that up, and then we can go to the construction Anyone else, or did we get everybody? Okay.
Can I divert it for just a second?
Sure.
See, since how we're talking about costs, you know, maintenance and all that stuff. Have you, have you and Carl sat down and figured out what it costs you on a yearly basis to take a road grader up those roads and, and make sure that they're smooth and comfortable, you know, versus say paving it and then not having to take equipment up there and, you know, putting manpower to work up there and costing the city money, you know, to do that kind of stuff? Have you guys figured out what that might cost?
I don't know if we've crunched those numbers.
Do you know how much time you spend on those dirt roads, you know, like all the roads that aren't paved? You know, I mean, how many man-hours you spend a year grading them?
That really varies according to the weather, our crew's availability to do the grading. You know, a lot of times we have them involved in capital projects. I would say, well, our goal is to apply the lignosite treatment to all the gravel streets twice in a season. And we don't always get there, but, you know, we'll grade usually more than that, but as far as the number of times or a comparison of man-hours on a stretch of pavement versus a dirt street, I don't have that, but I can, I can probably come up with something for you by the next meeting.
Chris, I'm pretty sure there's going to be a cost savings in not having to go up there and plow roads, or grade roads, you know, that are paved. So I'm just thinking that that would save the city a little bit of money, or else they might be able to divert manpower to do something else, which would be a cost savings kind of a thing, so, anyway. All right, well, thanks, Chris. I think I've asked that question before and got the same answer before, but, all right.
Okay. All right. Why don't you go over the construction plan now, Chris?
Okay. So, and this is, you know, making the assumption that we do end up going forward with this in, in some form. We would, we would be doing quite a bit of work, you know, CCON would be doing the paving itself, but we would actually be putting in quite a bit of work from the borough side to, to adjust all the utilities. You know, when we got a dirt street, all the utilities are buried so that, you know, the valve boxes and manhole covers and things like that, because we, we don't want to hit them with the grader. So when we pave, we need to bring all those things up to the surface so we know where they are, and we don't have to cut under pavement to find them, so. So there would be quite a few pieces of hardware, I think, seven manhole adjustments, eight water valve adjustments, and various sewer cleanouts and things that we would bring up to the surface. We would be grading the street, compacting it really well to prepare it for paving. After the paving is complete, we would be doing what's called shouldering, which is coming in and basically placing rock along all the edges of the asphalt where it goes into a driveway or something, just so we protect that edge, you know, to, to provide a smooth transition. And, you know, something that we, is not really part of this project, but we should mention is that, you know, there are going to be folks, if there's paving happening, that want to do their aprons or their driveways, and if that's the case, then that stuff would need to be handled, you know, separately between the property owner and the contractor. It would not be, it wouldn't be brought into the LID process. It would be a separate, a separate contract. Road closures, we don't really anticipate much. You know, there might be closure for, you know, part of a day when we're actually doing the paving itself, but we would try to minimize closures and maintain as much access as possible for folks during the construction process. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the materials that we've proposed. We initially were focused on asphalt pavement, but, you know, after getting some costs in, and those costs being a little bit higher than what we had originally anticipated, we, we asked for an option to do what's called ATB, or asphalt treated base. That is typically, on a highway surface, for instance, that's what's below your running surface. You have your, your surface course of asphalt, and then below that, you have asphalt treated base, which is basically an oil mix just like asphalt, but it's a coarser rock. And for low-traffic streets like we have around here, ATB seems to work just fine. We actually did some borough streets, some of the paving that we did last year, we did with ATB as opposed to asphalt, and it, it seems to work just fine. And it, it ends up costing less because we can use local rock. If we use type 2 asphalt for paving, it requires a, a harder grade of rock, which we have to bring in from outside, and so when you look at the different cost options, that's, the big difference is the ATB costs less because we can source it, we can source the rock for it locally. And I don't really have any concerns with it holding up long-term. You know, I think if you, if you look out into the future, I mean, asphalt will probably last longer than ATB, but I think either one is going to last a really long time. We're putting down two inches of mat. For comparison, over on Rambler Street, that is probably less than an inch of chip seal, which is not as good a product as either asphalt or ATB. It's really thin. I think that chip seal was done in 2001, or maybe early in 2002, and, and it's still holding together this long after the, the application. So the, the surfaces we're proposing on, on Vesta and Unimac are actually much more robust, and we would expect at least that much life out of them. So, yeah, I wanted to just sort of go over the, the numbers a little bit on this, this summary sheet that I, that I passed out. We, the last paperwork that we sent out, you know, for the hearing, which included some assessment numbers in it, those assessment numbers were based on the assumption that both streets would participate in the LID, you know, and so they would share mobilization costs. And so, you know, we have to, the more we talk about it, the more we realize we probably should put some numbers out there that, that allow for the fact that, you know, maybe one street or the other won't participate, and we'll have a standalone project. So on this summary sheet that I, I passed out, the second section there showing streets covered by proposed LIDs, there's four lines. The first line is an LID that is Unimac Street and, and half of Pearl F Street. And I'm not sure I covered Pearl F yet, so we probably should divert for a minute and talk about that. Because Pearl F Street, for those of you that may not know, it's, it's a very short street that joins Unimac and Vesta. There's four property owners on Pearl F. Two of them have frontage on Unimac Street, two of them have frontage on Vesta Street. Because it's such a small street, we didn't think it was worthwhile to try and pursue a separate LID process, especially considering that the property owners, you know, concerned are already, you know, potentially in, in another LID process for Unimac or Vesta. So what we decided to do was just break it down, split it right down the middle, and include half of Pearl F with Unimac Street and half with Vesta Street. So if both Unimac and Vesta move ahead with an LID, then we would pave all of Pearl F as, basically as an included cost in those, those LIDs. If only one street goes and not the other, then we end up paving half of Pearl F, whichever half, you know, either half on Unimac or half on Vesta. So, does anybody have any questions about that?
The cost of paving Pearl F, half of it would be paid by, if one street doesn't do it?
Yeah, if, so we, we basically included half of Pearl F with each of the LIDs, one half with Unimac and one half with Vesta. Well, no, we, if only one LID went through, say if only Vesta Street went through, we would only pave that half of Pearl F that, that runs into Vesta.
So how much would it discount the cost if, if Pearl F wasn't included in either Unimac or Vesta?
I don't know that. I don't think it would be very much, because it's such a short street, and we would end up paving the radius and an apron. By the time we paved two aprons, there wouldn't be a whole lot left in the middle. And that was kind of the, the thought process we went through to, to where we just included it. Yeah, it, it is going to be a little bit more, because there's going to be a section, you know, maybe 80 or 100 feet in the middle. It's not going to be all that much, and so we just included it. I can certainly break those numbers out if, if it's useful, if, if there's a, a desire for us to do that.
Chris, if I, is there a possibility that, you know, the paving of Pearl, the non-apron, could be on the borough? I, I don't, back to, we don't know what the costs are. I mean, we've got, we've got a very small amount left in our paving fund.
Yeah.
But, and that would still be up to the Assembly to decide, but...
You know, I think Public Works would be willing to consider that. I can't speak for Carl.
We have to know the numbers better.
Yeah. Well, let me, let me write that down and look into it.
Hey, Chris, did you guys ever think about chip sealing these things instead of doing the ATB? What would the cost would be? Because if chip seal seems to be holding up for a number of years, you know, and if, and if dust seems to be an issue, and if cost seems to be an issue, is that something you guys even, is there a third option out there?
I, I guess it's possible.
Would you look into that, just for kicks? I mean, just to throw it out there? I mean, I'd like to see all, all the pieces on the table myself.
Can CCON do that? Can they chip seal?
Yeah, that's, that's a question I need to ask them, because I'm not sure.
Chip seal, it actually uses some, possibly some different equipment. I'm not sure how they do it up here, and CCON may not have that equipment here. It actually, I just don't know. I don't know what they're, they have staged here.
I, I think I can state that it would require a rock to be brought in. It, it's a very thin surface, and it requires a very hard rock to work, to, to be successful. So maybe even better quality rock than, than regular asphalt, just because it's so, it's usually, you know, half an inch or an inch. It's not much.
Because I know, I know, past practice has been that we've chip sealed roads around here, you know, for a while, till we could pave them, so, just Chris.
Well, in a perfect world, what you're supposed to do is you put your asphalt down, and chip seal is a product that's designed to come back about every five years, and you put it on top of asphalt to seal cracks. So for places that have lots and lots of money, that's where you see chip seal used. Many... Many communities, not just Petersburg, have used chip seal as a paving product directly onto, you know, gravel or asphalt, gravel or dirt roads, just because of, you know, less cost. But as a product itself, it's designed actually to go on top of asphalt and seal cracks and keep it, keep water out of asphalt, which is what tears it up. But, yeah, it's worth, we can at least ask.
Yeah, another, another point to make about chip seal is that it, it works best if you have a very solid surface underneath it. We know that portions of Unimac and Vesta, you know, are dug down to hardpan. We don't know if the entire streets are, and so if you have a street where you suspect, you know, some of your street may be floating, you're going to want to put a stronger surface on that street, so it'll hold together better over the long term. Rambler is, you know, a very solid road. It was dug down to hardpan the whole length of the road. And so, it's a good candidate for something like chip seal, which doesn't have a lot of structural integrity of its own. And, you know, I know that at least half of Unimac is that way, but I don't know about the other half, you know. We, we know that the portions that contain the water and sewer lines are resting on hardpan, so we know at least a portion of the street is, is dug down all the way on the north end of Unimac, but, you know, the shoulders may not be. And so, so when you talk about using chip seal, it's, it's, it's definitely a good option in certain cases. I'm not sure if it would be on the streets we're talking about here, but I, I probably should ask CECON if they can do it, and, you know, what the cost would be.
Chris, wasn't that Richard Burrell and Ron Bushman and Rick Braun that put that in? Unimac and Vesta? Both around, right?
Yeah, Rick, Rick Braun. I've talked to Rick Braun about, about Unimac, and he, you know, he gave me a lot of info on that street. I, I didn't get as much on Vesta. But, like I say, we're, we're pretty sure that at least the water and sewer lines are cored out, and so we're not concerned, I guess, what I'm saying here is, we're not concerned about asphalt holding up long-term. There's, there's enough structure there in the street that a two-inch layer of asphalt or ATB is gonna, is gonna hold together just fine, you know. I'm not saying we'd never get a pothole somewhere, but we can, we can handle that if it comes up.
It sounded like you were concerned if chip seal would, would work in these streets, because you weren't sure if the entire road was dug down to hardpan, so I just thought that might be an option to check with those guys since there's...
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I, I think so, and, and I suspect we'd find out that, yeah, you know, if we verified it with everybody that was involved, if that's possible, we'd find out that they're, you know, the entire length of each street is not shoulder to shoulder, shoulder to shoulder dug down all the way. Yeah.
Well, and I don't think, I don't think Bushman dug down to hardpan, because when you guys fixed Unimac a few years ago, they had that dug out pretty good. And is that when you went down to hardpan, Chris? Didn't you say that you...
Well, no, when we, when we resurfaced Unimac and Rambler, we just, we basically took off, or not Rambler, sorry, Vesta. We did those two streets, I think, one right after the other, one year, one the next season. We went down about eighteen inches to maybe two feet, because the, the base of the road was fine, it was just the surface that had gotten, you know, contaminated with too many fines from the sand truck and, and just, you know, maybe sediment over the years, and so we took down the top portion of the road, and since then, we've had very little trouble with either street.
What, what product did you use on the side roads that you guys did last, last time they were done?
Your last year, you mean? With the, like, Eighth Street and, yeah, well, we used, for like Eighth Street, we used asphalt, type 2 asphalt. But some of the other streets, I'm not exactly sure which ones anymore, but we, we did a mix of ATB and asphalt. The, I know that the street, Third Street that goes up to the gym from Mango Avenue, that is ATB. And, so, yeah. Your ATB surface, like I say, it's, it's very durable, not, not as much so as asphalt, but for the low traffic that we get on our roads around here, it's, it's really fine.
Any other questions?
How did you come up with 3% interest, and is that negotiable?
That would be a question for Steve or, or Jody. I don't know the answer to that. What does it say in the ordinance? I think the ordinance moves the, I mean, the, the ten-year term was just something we threw out there. Those terms can be altered, I guess, if, if the, if there's a, a will of the LID participants, and if the Assembly agrees, then those terms could be, you know, it could be five years, or it could be twenty years, or, I'm not sure about the interest rate. Maybe we'll have an answer on that in a minute, but I know the, the length of term is, you know, could be adjusted.
I was just wondering what, how, the city finances, the cost, and what, what your costs are, and if we're covering that, or you're getting extra out of this?
Yeah.
I can't speak for Jody, but my guess is she's hedging her bets on what it would cost the, the borough.
I mean, I can, I can speak to what, what do we do with our reserves, which is the, you know, back end, the interest rates, which is basically, our reserves are invested in generally very safe things, which probably does not pay us 3%. Joyce might be able to answer that question.
Nice.
Yeah. So, you know, beyond that, you know, probably just the hassle of, of having to send out separate tax bills, which is what we're, we're trying to avoid, and it appears we will have to do on this. And the administrative issue of collection for those people who don't pay and having to go through that. So, we probably need Jody here to speak to the impact of a lower or higher interest rate and/or the term. I don't believe the ten-year term is anywhere in the ordinance. I think that was pretty much just a discussion that kind of came out of what the Assembly was talking about.
Actually, the ordinance says, "The Assembly shall fix terms and times of payments, times of delinquencies, penalties on delinquent payments, and a rate of interest on the unpaid balance. Payment may be in one sum or by installments over such terms as the Assembly deems appropriate." So we have a...
That is 100% up to the Assembly, is what that says, on both the term, both the interest rate and the length of the term.
When Jody was calculating this, was there any consideration to the savings that the city might incur by not having to grade the road?
That's what Kurt asked.
Yeah. I, I actually, the questions that I captured that we need to follow up on are, does the condition of the street figure in the tax assessment? It sounds like it does not, but we need to make sure that we don't have to do that. Is interest still charged on an early payoff? And it sounds like we can decide that, but we need to answer that question for you. Can costs be offset by savings in road grading and lignocide or some other treatment? Will the tax bill include the LID cost or a separate billing? And it sounds like it's going to have to be a separate billing. And then, there were questions about Pearl F costs and if there were any savings, if we left off parts of that. And then, a question about if chip seal is an option, if CECON can do it, and what kind of surface they need to be able to do that. And then, the interest cost, which we just answered. So I've tried to make sure, at least that I captured the things that I think we need to follow up on for you.
Well, I have one. I think if the property owners pay for, for it in full, maybe the city should pay us back over a ten-year interest-free, including charge you get. I mean, that's the fairest way, because all the other residents have their streets paved. I mean, I'm for it, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, you know, a lot of the street paving that we've done has been state or federal money that's come into town.
So what happens if that comes back in, and we already have our streets done because we paid for it?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question, because the, the streets that we're talking about, Unimac and Vesta, are actually good streets. They work, they're low-traffic. They're not high, they're not candidates that are high on the list for discretionary paving, as much as I wish they were. I mean, I live on Unimac, so it'd be great, but, but the, the truth is, there's, there's a whole lot of other streets that we're going to be doing before we get around to paving, you know, Unimac and Vesta and other quiet little cul-de-sacs here and there. I mean, the feeder streets, you know, we're, we're more concerned with, you know, main arteries. Like Eighth Street was a great example of, of the kind of thing we would put paving money into if, if we get any. It is possible that we'll get some, you know, the secure rural schools funding that everybody's been talking about, that may happen or may not happen. If, if that money does, and Steve can jump in if I go south here on some point, but if that money does come into the boroughs, coffers, 15% of that will go into our street paving fund. And so that money would then be used by us to, to kind of work down the list of what's the most critical need. I think right now, the, the top of the list would be XL Street, because it's a major thoroughfare. It's not in very good shape, and in fact, we're busy tearing up a whole block of it right now to replace the, the sewer line underneath.
And that's all flowing through the back of towns?
It does flow, yeah. And we're actually installing sewer down to hardpan, so we're gonna, we're gonna provide some solid surface for the road to sit on. But those are the types of projects that we'll use street paving funds for. I mean, if, if for some reason we had, you know, $2 million fall from the sky, then we might get around to doing streets like Unimac or Vesta. But the reality is, with the type of funding we've gotten piecemeal here and there, the streets, they won't, they won't happen for a long time. I kind of got diverted on my construction plan explanation a little bit, but is it okay if I jump back into that? We started talking about Pearl F, and it kind of developed into something else. So, so back to the, the summary sheet that I was talking about before, the middle section there, I just kind of broke out four different options, and basically what, what those options are is ATB and paving, and, you know, Unimac by itself, Unimac with Vesta, you know, each of those options with paving, with ATB, and then Vesta Street by itself, and, you know, and Vesta with Unimac, the cost for the Vesta Street property owners. So the first line there is the LID cost for Unimac Street, basically Unimac and half of Pearl F, without Vesta in the picture. And if you go across, you'll see that, that ATB paving cost is $71,175. And that's the same for all the streets, for the ATB cost of paving or the asphalt cost of paving. That's reflective of the fact that they use a similar amount of oil in the materials, and the labor cost to the contractor is pretty much the same to distribute either material. Where you see the big difference is in mobilization. So, move over one column, and you see, option one, ATB mobilization for Unimac Street, has a standalone, is, is $23,900. And if you go over to the asphalt paving option, you'll see that mobilization for that option is $36,754. The difference between those two options is the difference to get the rock shipped in from another location. I don't think the rock material itself costs a lot different. You know, if we buy a local rock, we pay a local price. If we get rock from somewhere else, we can probably get it for a little less, but the freight to get it here is really expensive, and so that's what you're seeing there. So, so option one, ATB cost for Unimac Street standalone basis, we would think per lot, it would break down to $4,134. If you go with type 2 asphalt for that street, you're looking at $4,693. And that, that represents the highest cost we can envision for that street for the improvements we're talking about. And I felt like it was important to throw that number out there, because really, I think we can comfortably say it's not going to cost more than that under any scenario that we've presented. That's like, if only Unimac proceeds with an LID, and we went with the type 2 asphalt, which is the more expensive option, $4,693 is basically the top limit of what it would cost per lot to do those improvements.
Chris, how familiar are your numbers?
Well, you know, I think if we, I mean, we got, we got quotes from CECON, and I think they will honor those quotes. We could always have a slight, you know, I mean, they estimate tonnage, so we could always run slightly over or slightly under. You know, if, if this number was going to vary any amount at all, I think Public Works would be willing to absorb some additional costs, just so we're not, we don't give somebody a set of numbers and then try to change them later. I, I wanted to give a top limit and say, here's, you know, this is the max, so that everybody, if you vote for, you know, the LID on Unimac and you vote for type 2 asphalt, you know it's not going to cost you more than that.
When we go out, if we decide to go forward, the, the letter goes out for voting, we'll have a firm number in it. Is that correct? That they will? And will it have a choice of which type?
Yeah, the, the way, the way we're going to handle that is, there, there will be a yes or no, you know, box on the ballot, and then there will additionally be a selection for the type of material. And so, you know, if you vote yes, and then you select ATB, you know, we'll, we'll count the votes, obviously, and see if we have enough yeses to proceed. If we do, then we'll, then it'll be a simple majority of which option was selected. So if more folks voting yes chose ATB, then that's the option we'll go with.
My guess, and it also should include some of the answers that were, for the questions that were asked tonight, is that...
Yeah, well, I would like to bring those answers back for the next Assembly meeting. You know, I, I didn't think we were going to take any, you guys were going to take any action this evening, and so, so we have an opportunity to, to bring some of that information back before any decision is made on whether or not to proceed with balloting.
Chris, I'm sorry.
Do you run the risk of one street, one, one product in one street, one other product in the voting process? Or is it...
Almost many options.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is, it is, and, you know, going, going, looking back, you know, we, we maybe should have simplified things a little more, but we, we really haven't done an LID process since, since I've been with the, the city, you know, the borough, and so we're, you know, if we had more experience in doing these processes, we might have, we might have proceeded a little differently in that regard, and, and tried to narrow down the options a little earlier in the process, so we're, so we're not throwing so many choices at, at folks.
Well, and that's why we're being a lot more flexible with a public hearing, is there are a lot of questions, and we haven't done this before either.
Chris, if I may... Chris, if I may, I just want to make sure I heard what Bob said and make sure we answered it correctly. One of the challenges with this has to do with, we don't really know the cost until we know which streets we're going to do. And that sounds, I mean, he's got some estimates here and that's, that looks good, but, for example, if we do Unimac but don't do Vesta, you know, he shows us how those prices are different because of that mobilization being all thrown on one street or the other. So, I mean, I think the longer the process goes, the more accurate the numbers get. But, you know, am I correct in saying that CCON will have a hard time nailing this down until you specifically tell them, "We're doing this many feet of paving on Vesta Street"?
Yeah, absolutely. And the other thing that may come into play that I was going to mention before we run is that, you know, if the borough gets any money, if we have access to any money to do paving on other streets that are, you know, very high priority for us, then we'll be trying to take advantage of, you know, the paving plant getting mobilized or getting, yeah, basically brought into operation again. And so, you know, these costs that I'm going over with everybody, these are assessments. We're not going to, we're not going to charge anyone more than what it costs to do. And so, if the borough can actually do some paving, that's going to bring that mobilization cost down. And we may actually end up being able to lower some of these numbers based on that, just if the borough gets money that we can use for paving. I don't, I don't know that we're going to have any right now, so, again, I'm trying to, I'm trying to give some of these as, this is the highest number it's going to be. If we can bring it down, we will.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. I mean, I, it's kind of this floating number, these are the high numbers. It could go less, but we can't commit to it going less until we know kind of what's going to happen.
Yeah.
And, sorry to sound bushy-washy, but it's just kind of the nature of the situation.
Thanks, thanks, Steve.
Could we say it this way, is that we put the high cost on there, but the cost could be less? If I was voting on it, I'd want to know, you know, what's my, what's going to be affecting my pocketbook?
One of the things that we, and as Kurt leaves us, am I correct in saying that?
Yes, yeah, I asked you if I could...
That's what I thought. We can't keep having the meeting with only three of you. There has to be a forum. Sorry. No.
Can we wrap it up in two minutes?
Five minutes if you want to wrap it up.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
I have other obligations, so...
He's got to catch the tide. So, my intention is to have you present the answers to the questions at the next meeting. Either at that meeting or at a subsequent meeting, we have a couple of decisions to make, and that will be if we're going to move forward and if so, which option. The, any modifications to the proposals to the LIDs if we decide to move forward on either one of them? And also, the length of balloting and the deadline for balloting. So, those will be things that you can anticipate. So are there, are there any other questions that we need to flush out?
Well, I'd just like, along with all that, is to find out if the three percent is negotiable, if that's lowered, that might help people go for it and because of the cost savings of not having to grade that road and maintain it, you know, chemicals...
It's on the list. So if we've, if covered the majority of the questions, then I need a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is concluded. Thank you very much, folks.